Evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August 22nd, 2023 regular monthly board meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Please, in the pledge, Ms. Jackson?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Vouchey.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Lamoyne?
Here.
Ms. Dyssard is ill tonight. Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Vouchey. Before we move on to Agenda Item Number 2.1, I would like to entertain a motion that we add the issue of school safety to the agenda tonight, so I will open this up to the board. Mr. Long?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. I would like, due to the public interest, I would like to add, make a motion to add 2.3. That's school safety concerns.
If we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long, do we have a second? Ms. White? Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchey. And now we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 2.1, Communications Update, and we have Ms. Sarah Felt. Welcome, Ms. Felt.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. All right, so you have your Communications Updates Packet in front of you. Inside of that packet are our press releases that have gone out over the last month. Also inside the packet are our analytics from our digital and social media pages, and then a bulleted list of the things that you'll see on the SuperNews, which we're going to be playing right now. It features some of the cool things that we've done over the summer and programs that have taken place.
There were founding fathers onstage, young scientists on campus, and almost 8,000 students in our schools. These stories have mourned this back-to-school edition of SuperNews. Hello, I'm Barry Lamoyne.
And I'm Sarah Felt, and welcome to SuperNews, where we take a look at some of the good things happening in our schools.
We'd like to welcome you all back and welcome Sarah to the team as we kick off another year of sharing our SuperNews with you each month.
We'll begin with a look back at some of the summer programs that took place this year, like the annual science camp held at the MoMA Center. With an emphasis on hands-on learning, students from across the district had the opportunity to explore the world of science, technology, engineering, and math in a fun setting.
And speaking of math and MoMA's, many other students participated in the Academic Games Camp this summer. In addition to the math games, equations, and onsets, Academic Games players also learned some of the study strategies of propaganda and precedence.
Fostering critical thinking skills is at the heart of the program and a key to our ongoing success, thanks to the coaches and players for taking part.
Meanwhile, at the Cultural Arts Center, young performers and artists worked with professionals to develop their interests and talents culminated in a showcase for both groups. This program was offered to our elementary students as a way to enhance their art enrichment opportunities.
Another annual program took place this summer, the Performing Arts Academy. This year's production of 1776 was truly a spectacular team effort and a top-notch performance. This musical presentation was a humorous, thought-provoking, powerful, and timely one. Congratulations to all that brought this story to life. And we'd like to give a shout-out to Shawman High's junior, Steve Volante, for his work with the studio in capturing the show utilizing the new equipment in the theater.
And just as these founding fathers in 1776 were spending time in Philadelphia, so too is Ms. Alicia Capstick, who is in the city of brotherly love for some specialized science training, a hands-on professional development at Spitz, Inc., for uses of SciDome Planetarium software. There she worked with astronomers and astrophysicists to understand how to program shows in the planetarium under the guidance of Dr. David Bradstreet, the developer of the Spitz Full-Dome Curriculum. Ms. Capstick is running the planetarium in all things science at the MoMA Center this year and is excited to be bringing learning to life in this state-of-the-art and out-of-this-world facility.
We'd also like to give a shout-out to Gina Acevedo, who was the face and the backbone of the MoMA Center over the last several years, as well as a great influence on our Academic Games teams. Thank you for all you've done, and welcome, Ms. Capstick. As the Louisiana Science Teacher of the Year, we know you will do great things this year.
And just as Ms. Capstick was training in her field, a wide array of educators was also taking part in professional development this summer. From learning about legislation that impacts our district to unveiling some new literacy initiatives, this summer was a busy time for many members of our school family.
And speaking of school family, we'd like to welcome all of our new teachers and employees into the district and give a special shout-out to our new literacy coaches who will be instrumental in helping our teachers help our students this year. Let's meet them now.
And just as these coaches are getting our readers ready for success, so too are many of our other coaches in the athletic arenas. Here we see some of the action at Bobby Knast Stadium when members of the New Orleans Saints Organization visited the Owl Football Team as part of the Saints Experience. The pros on hand utilized some of their equipment, technology, and training tips in an effort to motivate, encourage, and develop the high school players. It was a great mentoring opportunity and a positive experience for all.
Also visiting the Owl's Nest at Shawman High recently were those who took part in Journey to Success, an inspirational pep rally hosted by some of the Shawman High cheerleaders. The purpose of the gathering and the aim of the guest speakers were to encourage the ninth graders to make the most of their time at the high school, setting themselves up for future success. The orientation included stops in the school gym and the Cultural Arts Theater to address topics such as course offerings, dual enrollment opportunities, and the various pathways and career tracks that are available. Principal Wayne Warner was also on hand, reminding the class of 2027 about the importance of making good choices.
Another pep rally also took place recently, our annual back-to-school event. With Legacy of Learning as our theme, this annual gathering brings together all of the district's employees for a morning of goal-setting, camaraderie, spirit, and some special awards and recognition. It was a good start to a new school year.
In a world where technology and artificial intelligence grow each day, so too does the care and compassion we provide for our students. And those feelings are anything but artificial. What you do matters each and every day to every child with whom you come in contact.
All the work that takes place each summer is done with the same goal in mind, to offer all of the best to our students. Here we see some of the action from our first days of school. It's a daunting challenge to coordinate and provide such an array of services to our students each day, so we truly appreciate everyone who makes our school days possible. From our school leaders, teachers, and staff, to those at our transportation, food service, and maintenance departments, we say thank you.
We also extend our gratitude to the parents and community partners who support our efforts, and we thank all of you for joining us today. So for Sarah Felt, Jack Jackson, and me, thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time on SuperNews, where we always let...
The SuperNews roll!
Thank you so much, Ms. Felt, for presenting our monthly SuperNews. I think we are in our third or fourth year with this as a monthly item, so we want to thank you all for helping to highlight all the wonderful work that's being done. Any questions or comments for Ms. Felt?
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, we are getting a little feedback on the microphones, so if you can mute your microphones in between, that may help. Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 2.2, which is an update from the Port of New Orleans. And this evening, we have with us Ms. Laura Mellem, Chief of Staff for Port Nola.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I do have a set of slides, if they'll be on... Okay, thanks. Good evening, board members. Superintendent, thank you so much for having me. Before I begin the presentation, I wanted to do quick introductions of some of the team members that we have here today. I'm Laura Mellem. I'm the Chief of Staff, and I'm responsible for community outreach and communications, especially around this project. We also have with us tonight several members of our Board of Commissioners, Mr. Walter Legere, who is our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Jean Ferrer, who occupies the St. Bernard seat on our Board of Commissioners and is also a Violet resident. In the audience today, we also have two of our community engagement team members. Kylie Mills is our Community Engagement Manager, and Kayla Santiago is a Communications and Engagement Consultant with us. Together, Kylie and Kayla manage the community office that we have in Violet. We're open for office hours three days a week and also any other time by appointment, so any audience members who have more questions about the project, please get in touch with Kylie and Kayla. As you know, the Port of New Orleans is pursuing a new container terminal in St. Bernard Parish that will serve the larger vessels that are coming online and will keep Louisiana active in the shipping industry and competitive in the Gulf. Throughout the several years that we've been conducting community engagement on this project here in this parish, we've had the pleasure of getting to know many residents, community leaders, and business leaders here, especially in the community of Violet, which is, of course, the most adjacent neighborhood to the future terminal site. And through those conversations with parents and staff, many folks really said in many different ways how W. Smith is an anchor to the Violet community, and that's why we're here tonight, to talk about and reiterate the commitments that we've made as it pertains to the future of W. Smith. So with that, understanding, you know, that your top priorities as a school board is really the quality of education, as well as the environment and for a learning environment where students can thrive, we want to reiterate these commitments that are on the screen in front of you. The first is that we're committed to funding a new, modern school within the community of Violet that would be the future location for the W. Smith Elementary. We support a public process that would involve the board, community members, parents, teachers, and recognizing that the sooner the new school is built, the less impact the terminal will have for students and staff. I want to be clear that funding is available in the current phase of the terminal project's development. So with that, I have on the screen here a map of the property that the Port of New Orleans owns. It's in gray. You can see the port property completely surrounds the existing site of the W. Smith Elementary, which is in purple on the map. The black dotted outline is the proposed location of the container terminal. We've also showed two potential locations for a new school facility. These are in blue and green on this slide, and they are both owned by the Port of New Orleans and are located closer to the majority of homes in this school zone. I'll talk about more in detail about these properties in a second, but I would note that we've shared information about this with Superintendent, with you as board members, as well as with our two community advisory councils that meet regularly, as well as at our open houses series that we had earlier this year. And just anecdotally, from those conversations with community members, I think there's been more interest in Site A over Site B. So a little bit more detail about the two sites. Site A is located at the intersection of Colonial Boulevard and Judge Perez. You can see there's a small cutout in the upper right-hand corner. That's the gas station that's on the corner there, if you're familiar with the area. It's roughly 13.6 acres compared to the existing 10 at the current facility, and it is also adjacent to a long, narrow strip of property that we own that connects St. Bernard Highway to, all the way to the back levee. This is currently a wooded area that is undeveloped and is not something that we have any future plans for, so if that is of interest to either the parish or to the school board, that's something that we would entertain in discussions as well. On this map, we've also noted the proximity, so you can see that the majority of homes in the zone are within a 15-minute walk, walking distance or less to this site, so it's very centrally located. Up Site B is close. It is on the other side of Judge Perez, at the intersection of Judge Perez and Oak Ridge Boulevard. It is slightly set back from Judge Perez, and that's because there are perpendicular canals that intersect there, so that would be something to design around. The adjacent property to this location is also owned by the Port of New Orleans. We do not have any current plans for this property, but I would say that in the future it is possible that that property will be used for port-related activities. The site is 20 acres and is similarly close to the majority of homes in the neighborhood, with most of those homes being within a 15-minute walking distance of this site. Sorry. Our construction timeline remains consistent with what we've shared, both publicly and with you all as board members. We are about halfway through the public permitting process with the Federal Army Corps of Engineers, so we anticipate that we will receive permits in 2025 and would beacon construction immediately thereafter. I think I lost my mic here. It'll be a phased construction that will have the first berth complete and open by 2028, and the remainder of the facility to be built by 2032. I would note here that the first phase, Phase 1, is the berth that is furthest down river, and then the two container yards that are furthest down river. So it is possible to build the first phase of this facility with W. Smith still active as a school, of course, recognizing that that's not ideal for a learning environment, and so we would hope to be able to come to an agreement with you all to move the school sooner rather than later. The sooner a new school is built, the less impact that construction would have on students and staff. So again, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Pending any questions, this is my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Mellem. At this time, we will entertain any questions or comments from the board. Any questions or comments? Ms. Harris?
So, right now, you're presenting information, assuming that everything goes through, your permits go through, and that you were able to build the terminal. What happens if the terminal isn't built? What will that land be used for?
Yep. Thank you, board member, for the question. I would start by saying that the port and our private partners and the state are confident in that this is both a viable project and one that has merit, but in the, in the chance that the terminal, for whatever reason, does not move forward, the port does still own all of this land and would pursue some sort of maritime use for this. It is rare riverfront land in our jurisdiction.
Any other questions or comments from board members from Ms. Mellem?
Yeah, I have a question. You said that funding is available for the new school. Has that been appropriated by the legislature?
No, the Port of New Orleans will fund the new school through a bond issue, so we would be ready and willing to do that as soon as we can come to an agreement with the board.
Okay, so you guys are going to go out for a bond issue to pay for this? It's not coming from the state legislature?
That's correct.
Okay. And what if neither site is acceptable?
Yeah, so these are really for illustrative purposes. We are not in the business of building schools. You all are the experts. These are two properties that we already own and that are close to the community, and that's why we thought they may be worth pursuing, but if there are other properties that the board has in mind, we would gladly have those conversations.
It's really early in the process. I don't, I don't, you know, it's hard for us to look at these two sites and determine egress and ingress, in and out of the schools, so we definitely need some traffic studies to look at and information like that, you know, to determine what would be the best site.
Yep, and we would look forward to, you know, future conversations with you about what you would need in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Mellem?
Since, you know, y'all, it sounds like y'all here to stay in one capacity as other and/or another. As a willing neighbor and wanting to work with the community, and y'all look like y'all here to stay, would y'all be willing to donate some money toward the school board, the school system, to be used wherever they see fit, maybe like to improve safety in the schools? Or maybe money toward a new high school being built? Would y'all be open to that?
We would certainly look forward to future conversations with you all about how the port can support. I would also note that the ad valorem taxes that are expected to be generated by the terminal will, of course, contribute to your, to your budget.
Thank you very much. And you can, you know, if y'all come up with a little plan, you can get with Ms. Vouchey and come back and let us know, if, if y'all come up with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Ms. Harris?
So I know that in addition, obviously, there are going to be some specific schematics of what the terminal builds out would look like, and I know that that includes roadways and infrastructure in that regard. Would there, how would that work with, if a school is, if a new school is built? How would your projects for infrastructure tie in to the facility needs of that new school? Is that something that would be taken into consideration? And should we not be willing to sell if we feel like the school needs to remain on the land that it's currently on? What does that look like in the form of relationships?
So I would say that, you know, our hope is that we're able to come to a mutual agreement that is in the best interest of the school board and the students and staff at that school. If it is the case that after these conversations, you do not choose to move the school, as I said, we are able to, to phase, the first phase of the terminal with the school and its location, and we would have to look at alternate designs for the facility. I can say that that's absolutely not ideal for us operationally, and I can't imagine that that would be an ideal learning environment. And I'm sorry, the first question?
Question was about roadways and infrastructure and the new school tying in to the infrastructure that you all are recommending, should the terminal open in that space?
Yeah. So traffic flow is really important for the success of the terminal, and that's why we've been probably the top advocate for additional traffic infrastructure for the parish, including the St. Bernard Transportation Corridor that would connect the terminal to the interstate system, and we would certainly include any additional impacts expected from a new school and a new location into those traffic studies as, as our conversations progress about potential locations.
Ms. Rodney?
I have a question. What measures has the Port of New Orleans taken as far as to really look at the, what actually Violet needs? And when I speak, I know this is going to impact St. Bernard Parish as a total, but I'm looking at the more pinpoint of this, Violet, those who live in the 70092 ZIP code. What measures have you guys taken to see how this would impact? Because regardless, like you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the school stays, there's still be some type of maritime industry around it. If the school moves, there's still a maritime industry there. So even if the school moves or stays, it will impact the residents of Violet. And I understand you're coming to the school board about the school, but the school is housed by students who live in that area.
Of course, absolutely.
So what measures have you guys taken to, like, poll residents to see what they're like? Because I know there's been a lot of noise from the entire St. Bernard Parish, but this will affect Violet more than anybody else, and I stand up here to represent Violet. So what have you gotten, or what, what measures have you taken to honestly see what Violet feels about this entire situation?
Thank you, board member, for the question. We have really been committed to community engagement early on in this process. We've opened an office in Violet where we meet with residents and answer questions, receive input, and communicate updates. We've also set up two community advisory councils that's made up of residents. One is specifically focused on Violet, and the other is a St. Bernard community at large. And we've also done a series of open houses. We've, to date, now done six public open houses throughout the parish. Throughout this outreach, you know, I think that there's been really great opportunities to have conversations with residents and understand their concerns and to have those concerns inform the design. This is not just a one-way conversation. This is really thinking about how can this terminal project find opportunities for mutual benefit for the parish and for Violet. So a few that I would note is that we have redesigned the facility to keep St. Bernard Highway straight. That was something that we heard loud and clear, rather than looping it around the terminal, which is what we had originally proposed to do. We also are adding an overpass on St. Bernard Highway to avoid the rail intersection. That was heard loud and clear as well from residents. And then we've been working with the immediate, old Violet community on what a buffer will look like to separate the, the terminal from that neighborhood, as well as ensuring that the cemetery remains open and accessible, and also finding opportunities to provide additional land for the cemetery, which is what we heard from the community board of the cemetery. And then the school is really an important piece here to, looking to work with all of you for the opportunity to build a new state-of-the-art school for the students in Violet to attend.
Anything else, Ms. Rodney? Thank you. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, you brought up the St. Bernard Corridor. Can you speak to that, the process of that project? I know it's a separate project from your project, but can you speak to that project, the process?
Certainly. So the St. Bernard Transportation Corridor is, conceptually envisioned as an elevated roadway that would connect the terminal to the interstate system. It will be a DOT. It will be a DOTD project. It is currently being studied by the Regional Planning Commission. This is an important study. It's the first step needed in any transportation development project. It will formally document the need for the roadway, as well as determine the exact alignment of it. We, as I said previously, the port needs traffic flow to work in order to be successfully operational. So, we've been a significant advocate for the transportation corridor. We were successful in having 50 million committed at the state capital outlay level. That amount will be able to fund the current study, the design, the environmental, and the engineering of the roadway. And we also imagine, and this is in conversations with DOTD, that the transportation corridor will be ripe for a public-private partnership where private funding helps to implement it, and that speeds up the timeline on the front end. And then, a toll on container trucks helps to repay that funding on the back end. And that's a common way to do industrial road projects across the country.
So, is that a core project? Is that a core permitted project? Would the Corps have to permit that project?
I'm actually not sure who would permit that. It's either the Corps or the Coast Guard, but that'll be a DOTD project.
Okay. If you don't mind, if you could find out about that and let us know?
Absolutely. You have to.
Thank you.
Ms. Stalag?
Yes, I understand you have some funding from private partners, correct?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
You have some funding through private partnerships, correct?
That's correct.
Can you tell us what the total cost of this project is and how far, how far along are you in getting total funding?
Yes, sir. So, the cost estimate for the entire build-out of the project is currently 1.8 billion. We have a commitment from public-private partners at 800 million. That is Ports America, so they're North America's largest marine terminal operator, and MSC, who is the world's largest container carrier. Together, they have pledged 800 million towards the project, and they will also operate the facility once it's open. The remainder will be funded by a combination of Port of New Orleans funds as well as state, and we believe will be competitive for federal grants as well.
So, the actual construction is going to start in 2025, correct?
And of course, that's subject to change, but we are estimating that after receiving permits, that'll be around 2025, and we'll be able to...
I noticed there's no, there's no mention of the infrastructure.
The roadway?
The highway to the interstate.
So, our hope, and it's certainly, it's our hope that we would be able to have the roadway under construction at the same time as the terminal.
So, you're just hoping, hoping to get the funding for that, correct?
Now, I would say that the Phase 1 of the facility is only one berth, and so, it's not anywhere near the full capacity of the containers on day one. But, I mean, it's an aggressive timeline, and that was the word I was looking for, but it's also feasible. And we've really seen the support of the state here that this is absolutely necessary in order to keep Louisiana competitive in this space.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Harris?
So, I guess in coordination to what Mr. Warner asked, if we needed to do feasibility as well as, you know, a study to see the flow of traffic and how does all of that work? Is that something that you all would be willing to support the funding for? Or is that something that, as a school district, we are going to have to do on our own to determine transportation and how that's going to be impacted by what you are planning and where we're going to move the school and moving kids around what is going to be a construction zone for a number of years?
Yeah, I mean, I think conceptually, we are committed to supporting the design and construction of the facilities. That's part of the design process, but we really need to sit down and talk about details in order to understand what it is that we're doing. Thank you.
Ms. White?
Yes, I was just wondering, the permits y'all have, y'all already have all the permits?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We are in the federal permitting process. So, we are pursuing permits from the Army Corps of Engineers. I anticipate that we're about halfway through that permitting process. That includes a variety of environmental studies that are required. It shows the Corps what the environmental impacts of this project will be, and it requires us as the applicant to show how we're going to mitigate those impacts. And together, that package is what the Army Corps will consider in determining whether or not we receive the permits. So, those studies are currently underway, and we anticipate having the full package and permits complete by 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
So, if there is no funding for the roadway, do you guys intend on moving forward with the construction of the port?
So, there is funding for the roadway that's committed right now for the current phase that's needed. And as I said previously, this is really ripe for a public-private partnership, and we anticipate that there would be, we've actually already heard that there's interest from companies that do that kind of work around the country. So, I don't anticipate having an issue with funding for the roadway.
That didn't answer the question. Do you intend on moving forward with the project if there is no funding for the roadway and if there isn't the infrastructure to support it?
And as I said previously, you know, having the infrastructure and traffic work is paramount to our facility operationally working. At its core, a container terminal is a transportation facility. And so, we will do everything in our power, and the state is really behind this as well, to see both projects come to fruition.
Ms. Harris?
Last question from me, hopefully. But it kind of goes in line with what Ms. Jackson just said. So, you're in the permitting process. You feel like you're halfway through. If we sit down with you, we work out an understanding that what is best for the community is to move the school, we decide that that's what we're going to do, and then you find out that you don't have the permits to build a terminal. Is there still the commitment to pay for the building and moving of the school? Or are we in a process where we've told families, hey, we're moving the school, and now we're not?
So, we are in a posture right now with confidence in this project that we would make an agreement with you and fund the new school now, regardless of whether we've received permits for this terminal. If it's the case that further down the road, the terminal is not happening, I can't promise that a future project would have the financial flexibility to move a school, but this project does.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, and the reason I asked y'all about trying to throw the school board a little money is this, there's no doubt the taxes y'all are going to have is going to go in a pot. We only get so much out of a big pot, we get a little bit. If you can find some monies to throw to the school board, 100% of a little pot is a lot. So, I would hope y'all really look into it seriously. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lilliman?
I know you're here to present thus with all of this, but I'm reading all of this, and I don't see, there's not a lot of details here for us. And hearing from what you're saying is there's just a lot of hopes and promises. We like to have it in clear paper, black and white, you know? Because promises, anybody can make promises, but we need to, because in order for us to move the school and all of our children having to, all of the, you know, all of our children and our families, the disruption of them, we need to be able to have it in concrete, too.
Yeah, and I would imagine that coming to an agreement would include a CEA that writes, that has all of that in writing about what both parties would do. So, we look forward to future conversations.
Mr. Warner?
I just wanted to mention, I mentioned that the transportation corridor, I hoped that would also include rail. And the permitting process at the Corps, isn't there going to be an opening period for public comment on that, or is that open now?
There have been several open notices that, as part of the permit process. We would accept any additional public comments, please. You can give them to our office, to Kylie or Kayla, and we would submit that as well. The, I'm sorry, the rail question. So, both traffic and rail impacts will be part of what's studied and determined by the Corps' permit. So, that's something that's being studied now. And we'll gladly share the findings of those studies and the analysis with all of you once that's completed.
And I'm sorry, so, the permitting process, the public comment phase is still ongoing? Is that, it was just a backfeet, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'd have to get the exact details to you about the Corps' public comment process. They have an open 30-day notice when we issue the permit. That's since closed, but we will still take public comment and are excited to have more community conversations with you all. But let me get back to you on what are the next steps in their process with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Mellon.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question?
At this time, we do have several members of the community that have signed up for public...
Can I ask a question?
Okay, sir, according to our... Oh, no, sir, not at this time. We are opening it up for public comment for those that have signed up at the beginning of the board meeting. And so, at this time, I want to remind the public, per our policy, we have several members that have signed up for public comment, and we have, each member will be allowed three minutes to step forward and make comment. The first person signed up for comment is Mr. Fred Everhart. If you could please step forward.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the board for bringing up this meeting and bringing the port to give us an update. What I hear here is a lot of tiptoeing through tulips. Funding is not there to do this project, and how you all, you all are aware that St. Bernard Parish government, but a direction of the district attorney has filed a jurisdiction lawsuit against this port. So, everything you see here, they continue to move forward, but if that, if the judgment is in our decision, all this is out the window. I came to this board, I'll say, a year and a half ago, and I asked you guys not to sell this port, I mean, this school. I would hope y'all still sit there and do not do this, this deal with the port. We, this port has promised this parish many, many promises in the past with MRGO, it being one of them, and y'all all know the outcome of that. They promised different issues about levy system and protecting the parish if they come in. We've never reaped a benefit off of anything. So, why are we here listening to this? Because it's lie after lie after lie. They can sit here and tell you that the funding's there for this highway, for this north-south corridor. I haven't seen it yet. I haven't even seen the plans where it ties in. So, how do, how can we sit here and believe everything they're saying? That they're going to build us a state-of-the-art school? You only got so much money without funding from the federal government to help add to this project. It's going nowhere. We have to worry, we have to listen and be concerned and take in consideration the residents around this port. Old Violet, Riverbend, New Violet, Violet Above the Violet Canal, all the way up in the whole entire parish. We have to try and stop them as hard as we can. We can't just give in because they're going to give us a state-of-the-art school. They so-called say they're going to give us a state-of-the-art school. We can't just give in to that. Nothing's on paper. We're just taking their word as of right now. They're still in a feasibility study. They're still studying. They taking, they doing their meetings with the public, but all they're saying is what they're trying to do. Nothing is in stone. So, on behalf of the residents in this parish and all these parents, these residents in this building, stand your ground, do not give up, Willie Smith. We still in the fight. We have not lost yet. I don't know about y'all, but I lived in the eastern part of this parish all my life. I never thought in a million years that we would be in this predicament, fighting a giant like we are now. Every resident that lives in the eastern part of this parish has just about signed this petition. We don't want to pass through a giant of a port every time we have to go home. We don't want to see our marshlands interrupted. We don't, we don't, they really don't know what they're going to do with drainage. When you take a massive port of this magnitude and concrete, all that land, they promising us a pumping station, they promising the world, but nothing's on paper. That's what scares me, people.
Thank you, Mr. Everhart. That is three minutes.
And I think, right now, y'all want a driving seat and do the right thing. That's all I ask y'all to do. Thank you, everyone. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Everhart. Next public comment, Robert Showalter. Good evening.
Hi, guys. Thank y'all for having me here and giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the SOS Group. I'm not sure if y'all familiar with our group, but we, our main purpose of our group is to fight this project. I've been in this business for 40 years. So, they got nice, pretty crafts charts. They're going to tell you a lot. Taxes they talked about, they won't give you specifics on what that tax is. You know they're going to be exempt from majority of the tax, but they won't tell you how much that may be. So, they blowing smoke up y'all butts. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. All right. And people they're going to hire, they said, every time I ask for specifics, I've asked Mr. Legay, myself personally, to give me specifics on the job that's going to be there in a parish year. How many crane operators, forklift drivers, how many yard truck drivers, how many office people, which I doubt would be any because they're going to run this stuff out of their offices elsewhere, and then all the seamship lines that come into this port of New Orleans, they don't have offices here. They're in Houston and New Jersey. So, it's all false. I want to know the specific jobs. That's all I ask for, and they won't tell y'all. They keep, and then look, remember, they paid a consultant $4 million to put this over our eyes, okay? I've seen port development, almost every single port in the United States. You don't want to be by them. We don't want to be by this port. I'm telling you, it's a disaster. It's a cancer. It starts off right here, and then little by little, people move away, houses go defunct, you know, businesses go out of business. Property values, they say, is going to raise property taxes. What a joke. I don't see none of these people except for the one commissioner that's willing to live here in St. Bernard Parish. It's just so great. Why don't they all come move down here? Okay? So, what I'm trying to say is, my organization has 10,000 signatures on a petition against this port. Every single survey I've seen by politicians, which put this port situation on their questionnaire, 70% to 73% of people in this parish do not want this. I am passionate. I don't have no prepared speech. I speak from the heart. I don't have people write me stuff here so I can talk to y'all. I'm speaking from my heart. I know what this stuff does. It's not good. You do not want to be by these facilities, no matter how good they look. So, what our organization has gone, so we had the lawsuit that we filed early on, and the judge says we were premature, you know, that we had to show some harm. So, we're in appeals. So, we had a little, about this much paperwork that we presented because we thought we would be able to go and, we didn't realize we were trial that day. We thought we would be able to prepare for trial, bring our consultants, and prepare for this. So, we're in appeals because we just want the opportunity to go sue them and stop this before it hurts us. Second is, St. Bernard Parish filed a lawsuit to say that you can't start construction until the roadway is done. Now, is that too much to ask from the Port of New Orleans to say, hey, wait, build the road and then build your port? Not to say we're going to build in, oh, maybe we'll get funding. Now, she said outright, they'll get the funding. That's not true. That's not true. They got turned down by the state legislature for their funding for the study. The RPC ended up stepping up and taking on the study. So, nothing's guaranteed, people, nothing. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Showalter. That's our time.
I'm sorry?
That's our time. It's three minutes.
Okay. The port had a lot of opportunity to speak. The port had a lot of opportunity to speak. Can you give me just like one more minute? I would like to hear what SOS is doing, because we got the parish, now we got the DA suit, our suit, we got two-lane law and environmental, that we are clients to them, that's ready to fight them because of the environmental issues. We have something coming out in a couple of weeks, I'm telling y'all, that we will get in the hands of every local, state, and federal legislator to show that this is not the right place to put this port.
And we appreciate it.
Well, thank y'all very much for hearing me out. I could speak for a lot longer time, and I invite y'all to call me, talk to me, and let me give you the real story on what's going on with this port.
Thank you. Next to speak on this item, Michael Bayham.
Good evening.
Before I go into my remarks, am I allowed to ask the port representative a question?
No, sir, this is for public comment only, this is not a Q and A.
All right. I was gonna ask if you don't sell the school, whether they were gonna pursue expropriation to get the school, but that can be addressed later. First of all, I want to thank every one of you tonight. You're doing your job, you're doing your job exactly what we expect out of people St. Bernard. You're asking questions, you're engaging in discovery, you're getting information we need to know out there, and I appreciate all of the work you are doing and the pointed questions you asked tonight. I could tell you that, that I oppose this port, and I hope at the appropriate time, when the school sale does come up, that this board will stand by to our community and not sell a school. Now, you heard tonight that the state is for this project. Well, we're about to have a change in management in the state of Louisiana come January. We're gonna have a new governor, and we're gonna have a new state representative as well, and we may have a new state senator. So nothing is inevitable. Don't give up hope, don't give up the fight. Other battles like this have been fought, and they have been won by the underdog. I appreciate your service to this community tonight, I appreciate the questions you ask, and I hope you will continue asking the questions that people need to know in this parish.
Thank you, Mr. Bayham. And finally, we have Nisha Ankale.
Good evening. All right, good evening, everyone. I stand before you, resident of Violet, born and raised here. I am against this port. However, I do sit on the advisory board. A lot has gone on with this port and this school board. And I can recall meeting with this school board, some new members, some old members, and it was down at Willie Smith School. And the question was asked, had the school board met with the port? If there were any discussions about the port coming to Violet? And I was told, no, that there was not, by Ms. Voce. And I also addressed that there were many different stories. The port would say one thing, and then the school board would say something else. So I then asked if we can have a meeting with the board, the port, and Violet community residents with the 70092 zip code. And I was told, no. And how ironic, the port is here tonight speaking and addressing the school board. And also, the port, I asked you all a couple of months ago about holding a meeting with Violet residents, and I was told that that would not happen. However, you can come out to the school board and address them. So I charge you all tonight to hold a meeting with Violet residents, who is gonna be impacted the most by this port, especially the Violet residents. Out of respect, you all do owe them that, if nothing else. So get with the Violet community and hold a meeting and get their questions answered. The same way you can come out and address the entire public and the school board, I expect you all, as the port, to do that with the Violet residents of 70092. Another thing I'm asking for is transparency. If this project goes through and the board decides to sell the school to the port, I'm asking for public records, that it is shown how much this school board is giving for Willie Smith School. Because whatever the new location is gonna be, it's rumored it's $30 million, it's rumored it's $35 million. I don't know which it is. However, however much it is, I'm standing here on behalf of the Violet residents, that all of the money, every penny, goes into building Willie Smith School. That's the school[947.22][947.25][applause] that's gonna be impacted, that's the school that's gonna be moved, that's the school that we would like to have a state-of-the-art, just like all of the other rest of the schools, elementary in this parish. So I'm asking for transparency from this board if this project goes through. Thank you.
We wanna thank all of the members of the community that attended tonight to discuss this issue, and for those that signed up for public comment. There is no one else signed up tonight for public comment. We will continue to discuss this. We ask that the public stays engaged with us as we continue to have conversations on this topic, and we thank you for your participation, participation and engagement. Now, we'll move forward to agenda item number 2.3, which is an update on school safety. And we're gonna start the conversation with Ms. Voce. Okay, Ms. Voce, we, to be specific, we would like for you to give us some comments about the status of school safety at Shellmet High School, the, address the issue that happened last week, and what has been done.
Issue the stuff put into effect. All right, Ms. Mallon has asked me to talk about the measures that have been put into effect for the beginning of this school year, and then again, speak about the issue which occurred Friday and what we plan to do at this point. So just as a, just a brief recap, because we have discussed this at prior meetings, we talked about our school, you know, emergency and crisis plans, which we have updated, and we have secured grants and funding to complete the single points of entry into our middle schools as well, which at St. Bernard Middle, at Andrew Jackson, at Trist, and at Raleigh, those projects are underway as well. I won't go through all the preventative programs that we have put in place. We had an extensive presentation about those by Mr. Kassar at a prior meeting, but we did, I think, when you saw on SuperNews, the orientation program, beginning with the ninth-grade students, that we did the other day, where we focused not only on the academic achievements and what programs that we had in place at Shellmet High School from an academic perspective. We have, and we began a program, which is a more of a life skills program, where we have guest speakers coming in, and the whole point is to develop that culture among the students in terms of making plans, in terms of relationships, building relationships with others, getting along. In the, one of the classes that all students will attend as a ninth grade, as a ninth grader, we have those particular programs in place two to three times a week, and then we will be bringing in the guest speakers that we have lined up to talk with kids concerning these particular issues. We have been doing the Too Good For Drugs program, which we talked about extensively as well, and that is in place, as well as that second step program. I want to, we also have a group called Driven. I think Mr. Showalter, who spoke a little bit earlier, is part of that group, where these men and women are coming into our schools, hope, at, once a week. They're partnered with Faith-Based Group of Next Generation, where we have, at lunchtimes, they'll bring in pizza for students, and we have those organizations to begin to build that trust within the student body and to talk about these particular issues as they come up. The increased counseling services, we have 11 school counselors, social workers, and therapists just on the Shellmet High campus itself to work with our students in developing those skills necessary. The Crime Stoppers program is being instituted right now, which is the anonymous reporting program for students and parents. We had an extensive presentation of that at the last school board meeting, and that is a new program that is being instituted right now at the high school and at the middle schools. The camera systems that we have at the high school, as well as the other schools, but primarily there, since that's the focus of what we're talking about tonight, you know, Sheriff Pullman had approached businesses within St. Bernard and, as well as our schools, in a program that he is putting in for, I guess, would you say, a partnership, where all external cameras, not only in the school settings, but in local businesses, that would be merged with the sheriff's department system, so that they would be able to look in real time through that camera system as to what is happening right external to the school, as well as within the rest of the community. But we took that one step further as we spoke with the people implementing that system, and we have then purchased the boxes that will allow us and the sheriff's department to have immediate access, not only to the video access, not only to the outside of the school setting, but if any incident or anything that occurs, immediately on the inside of our schools with the, throughout the, with the entire camera system. So that partnership is, is continuing so that they would have live access to anything that is happening or any incident which occurs. As far as the school resource officers that we have there, at this point, and Sheriff Pullman and I have had continuing conversations about this, and he's here tonight as we talked today, and maybe can shed a little light on some of this as well, but we've talked about increasing the school resource officer present, presence at the school. We currently have, at the high school, two permanent school resource officers. We have also, with the sheriff's office, have a residency investigator, an officer who goes out to, if we suspect, or if we have a student that may not have the proper documentation in terms of what their residence is, or if we do a mail-out and mail is returned to us, then what we do is do a thorough investigation. The sheriff's department sends the deputy out to actually investigate that particular residence. So we have a residency offer, we've been doing, doing that for the last two years. Just as, I guess, as an aside, last year, and this summer, and the beginning of this year, we did 205 residency investigations. Of those 205, we found that 33 of these actually did not live in St. Bernard Parish, and we informed them that they could no longer or could not attend our schools. I know there has been some talk out there about, and I keep hearing this, and we keep trying to dispel this, there's talk out there that students are bused in, or students are allowed to come into St. Bernard Parish to our schools, and that is not accurate, that is not the truth. There are no buses being sent to pick up students from outside the parish to come into the parish. If you see a bus that's going in and out, take a look at the side of the bus and see if it says St. Bernard Parish School District, or does it say the name of a different company? Because for those people who are not aware of it, there on Parish Road, there is a storage facility, and you might see tons of buses there, and those buses are not ours, they do not transport any of our students. They are actually bus operators who have either leased, rented, or have that property where they store their buses, and they go into the city and surrounding areas and provide transportation services elsewhere. So please, if you do see a bus like that, please look on the side of the bus, they are not our buses that are going in and out of the parish in the early morning or at dismissal time. The only non-residents that we knowingly have in our school system, and we've had this partnership since years and years and years, I know well over 50 years, is the children of the servicemen who live on Jackson Barracks. They do come to our schools, and we've had that arrangement for years. And the other students would be the children of any of our employees. We allow them to bring their children with them to school. Other than that, we have no one else that we knowingly have in our school systems who do not belong in the schools, who do not live in the parish. If anyone, and we have said this when people have brought up the subject to us, if anyone is aware, or feels that there is, all you have to do is send us that name, and we will investigate it, we will send the sheriff's deputy out to do the investigation. We do not do those ourselves. The sheriff's department does those for us in terms of those investigations. We also have a truancy officer that goes out, again, from the sheriff's department. If students are truant from school, we send that one out. When he is not out there investigating, he is stationed at Shellmet High School as an additional resource officer at the school. The dare officers that we have in our school system, when they are not conducting classes with our fifth graders, they are also stationed at the high school. And of course, I think at the last meeting, we had introduced Lieutenant Canepa, who is now permanently assigned to the school system, and she is also in and out of the school. I have talked with the sheriff, and I'm gonna ask him to come up in a second maybe, and put him on the spot a little bit, but, you know, we've known each other for 25 years, and had a tremendous relationship, even before he was actually the sheriff. And we have talked about providing additional resource officers. I know he has, just like it seems like everyone else in this country, a shortage that he is trying to fill within his department, just like we have shortages of maybe bus drivers and employees in our school system. But we are working toward increasing those numbers as he has those people available. The, we have also instituted the random searches, which we have in our student handbook, which we've had for years. We have instituted this year, though, those with the, the ones that we're doing in terms of some of the searches that we do each day randomly. Years ago, we used to have the drug dogs come in, those of you who remember those. We went ahead and we're doing that again this year. We started it this summer and had a trial run with it. We had to bring in those canines from out of parish, because we did not have any, but in speaking with the sheriff, I think he is buying now and training those particular dogs, so you have both the ballistic dogs and then the drug dogs to do the searches, and those will be done as well. So these are measures that we have put in place, and in a few minutes, we'll talk more about, you know, the fighting, but I would ask Sheriff Pullman at this time, he was so gracious to come tonight, and talk a little bit about the partnership that we do have.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you for having me. Having me, having me. First, let's thank everybody who came here today to talk about a very important issue. And of course, I was asked to stop by, that's why I'm here, because I also feel that very, very, my time's up. So, you know, it's really important, and I know the things that Doris talked about in our original video that we watched is called Super News, and the things that we're talking about right now is really super bad news, right? Because there's a video that's attached to that as well, and it's a very disturbing video. But Ms. Doris, it's very good to tell you about what we do to cover the school system and our commitment to the school system to work together, because it's my responsibility as well as y'all's to provide a safe environment for our kids to learn, right? And I think we've done a pretty good job for many, many years. But of course, things have changed. It changed here in St. Bernard, it changed across the country. We talk about getting more school resource officers. She's asking all the time. It's kind of like a beat-down, right? And the school board members as well call all the time and say, Sheriff, you know, we'll pay for it, but what's not, money's not the problem. The problem is finding men and women that want to serve today, right? Sounds familiar? Y'all have the same problem in the school system, right? And I can tell you, those are serving videos that we have to watch at Shemet High School is not conducive to find good teachers and educators to come here in St. Bernard and work. It's very difficult to have people who work in those schools under those conditions that's going to want to stay. You know why we can't find law enforcement officers? We've been getting kicked in the you-know-what for years, right? Now, I'll admit, it's much, much different here in St. Bernard Parish, and it's not like, nothing like going somewhere and talking to the great people of this parish and say, you know, Sheriff, the men and women of the sheriff's office is doing a good job. That makes a big difference. That makes a big difference, and that would make a big difference in our school systems. But yeah, we do have four resource officers. We have two dare officers. We have a full-time investigator that's assigned to the school system. We have two part-time investigators, one that does the residential checks, another one that's doing truancy. And when they're not doing that, we want them at Shemet High School. When the dare officers are not teaching, we want them at Shemet High School. But think about that. I have available people. Where do I have to send them? Shemet High School. Do y'all see something wrong with that?
Yeah.
Come on. That is a sad, sad thing that we got to police those schools the way we got to police them. And who are we blaming? Y'all blaming me? Y'all blaming the school system? You blaming those teachers? You know who we have to blame? Do you know who we have to blame? Blame those kids that's duking it out in our school! Blame them! Blame them! I have to arrest high school kids in our school and haul them off to jail? That's terrible. That is a terrible place to be in, and guess what? That's where we are.
That's right.
And that's a hell of a thing. And instead of showing up here and bitching at the school board and complaining about the system and blaming the system, let's start blaming the parents. What actions are those parents are taking those kids that was putting a beat-down on those kids? Y'all saw the same video I said. Are we going to question the actions of the deputy? Thank God that deputy was there, because somebody could have been seriously injured. Seriously injured. Thank God for that deputy. That deputy's very well-trained in our use-of-force policy. He's very well-trained on all equipment he's carried, and he's trained as a school resource officer. He's there for our kids. We want to question our policies? That's not the school board policies. Those deputies work for me. That's my policies. Right? And every time we have a use-of-force incident, which includes a taser department, there's an automatic review. An automatic review. But if you saw what I saw, I'm glad that deputy was there, and I'm glad he had a taser. All right? I'm glad he had a taser. Hey, look, when we do these things, it's not, it's not pretty. It's tough, and it's even tougher for that deputy to make that decision. But he has to make that decision. That's what he's trained to do. That's what he's trained to do. But this is a hell of a place to be. It's that we got to, I want more cops in the school. I want more kids, better kids in our school system. I want better parenting. How many people are showing up volunteering, Doris? How many people want to walk the halls and volunteer at our schools? How many? Well, let me tell you something. I'm going to start a program, all right? If I have to train y'all and if I have to get authorization, we're going to do that.
Give us a PTA.
Because we all have the same goal, and our goal is to make sure our kids have a safe environment to learn in. And everybody up here wants it, and I've talked to Doris and Leffin, and she wants it more than anybody. So we, yes, she does, including this entire school board. So let's not be too quick to judge, all right? Let's come up with solutions instead of complaining about the problems together, right? If y'all need somebody to lead the charge, you're looking at him right here. You're looking at him right here. All right? I love St. Bernard Parish. I love our kids and the kids of our future. If we screw this up, if we screw this up, we're going to be like the rest of the area in the metropolitan area, and we don't want to be like that. I'm off the box. If y'all want to ask me any questions, I'll try to answer them.
You know, and I do want to say that we've worked extremely closely over the years, and Sheriff Pullman has been there every time and any time that we have needed anything. And I do have to say, I know I see many of the Shemet High administrators and the people here. The vast majority of our kids at Shemet High are very, very good kids who do the right things each and every day. But we do have a group of students there who feel that any time they have a conflict or any time they have a problem with another student, they resort to fighting. And in many cases, you know, as much as we counsel them, when we speak with their parents, sometimes we have difficulty with the parents as well. So for those students, you know, if we do have students who cause a major disturbance, a major fight at that point, and it's a class-three violation, and I can't talk about specific children, as you obviously know, because they are minors and they all have rights, but if there is a class-three violation, which is in our handbook, and at that point, those students will suffer those consequences, which is school removal and placement at the alternative school. There are laws in the state of Louisiana of what can and cannot be done. And in those laws, if you read the revised statutes, there are procedures that we have to go through in terms of due process rights, in terms of talking to the individuals involved, in terms of giving them their, everyone their particular rights. But we will remove students who are participating in those kinds of disturbances, and we will become tougher on, I know Sheriff Pullman, that there have been fights, you know, in terms of, for years and years and years. But we are at the point now where if that is the first inclination, you know, of our students, with all of the counseling we have, with all of the programs that are put in, with all of the teachers who are working very hard, with all of the concerned parents who are in there, and we still have those occurrences and those students who are choosing to commit those acts, then we will move with them, remove them from school. The law mandates that we offer educational services, but we will do that at the alternative site. I do know you talked about having, you know, we had those students arrested Friday, and they have to go through the legal process. They have rights in that particular area. They are released to their parents, and then they go through the process that happens in the court system.
There's due process on all of them.
There's due process for everyone.
I understand that, you know, but just a simple thing like respect. Disrespect. If you don't respect your mother, you're not going to respect your teacher, you're not going to respect the principal, you're not going to respect one another, and it's going to go on and on and on, and you're going to have a troubled life. You will have a troubled life. It comes back down to respect. You know, let's, if we throw them out of school, you know, to come back, let's go through some type of anger management, some, you know, have some type of mentorship program. Let's try to get them back in. We don't want them on the street.
We do that, right. And as you well know, we do that at the alternative school site, going through those programs.
That's where we have to do a better job, because we owe it to those students who come to school every single day, who want to get a good education. They're probably frightened, half your staff's probably frightened over there. And I promise you this, I'm going to do a better job. I'm going to make sure that we mix some more deputies coming in there just to roam the halls, not to be like a military state over there, but try to help these kids, to try to help them. Just a simple, basic life skills of just starting with respect, you know? There was an incident one of my officers was telling me about, is a teacher asks a kid to do something, and it was a female student, cursed her out, the teacher. And to me, that's mind-blowing. I know, I know it's going to be hard to believe, but I'm not an angel, and I grew up, I was probably considered a bad kid, but I remember if I got sent to the principal's office, my dad didn't even ask me what happened. He did not even ask me what happened. My dad wasn't wanting to beat up the principal or the teachers and saying, you're picking on my kid. I feared my dad. I feared authority. We got to get back to that. We got to get back to that, and it's just one word, respect. Sorry about that.
And we are hoping that we have the cooperation of the parents as we do this and as we institute these procedures, and we will remove students who are showing the extreme disrespect and who are resorting to violence.
I know, meeting with Judge Bob, just meeting with him, he's been trying to put a group of mentors together to address some of these issues for probably over a year now, and we're making some progress, getting some people involved, people that's willing to volunteer in the violent community. I've seen, you know, Dyson, over Dyson here, and I see, you know, some people in the audience that was willing to participate in that. And we just don't know where to start, you know, and this is a perfect time. Now, he said from the bench, if people's arrested, he can mandate some things from the bench. But I don't want to have to arrest somebody just to get them in front of Judge Bob to have to mandate things. We ought to start trying to do some of this stuff on our own.
Any other questions?
I was talking with Judge Bob last week about that, yes. Okay.
That's it? No questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pullman?
I'm going to show up for you. We got something out of you.
I'll just make a statement. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here, for your passion for this. And I know you're very passionate about school safety and making sure that we implement in whatever program, and whatever I can do to help, however I can volunteer to be a part of this, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you. That would be great. Thank you.
Well, we're going to be in discussion in terms of creating a program that we can make some of this happen.
And I know we're much better than this. We are much better than this. We can do it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff Pullman. At this time, we do have several members that have signed up to speak on Agenda Item 2.3, School Safety. And just as a reminder to the public, you have three minutes on that, and this is to speak on school safety. We want to once again thank the public for being here. Thank you for your engagement. Thank you for your respect for each of the speakers so that we can hear the comments of each person that signed up to speak. First signed up to speak, Jason Dewey.
Thank you very much. As a parent and as a graduate of Shemet High School, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. So much of what I'm seeing and hearing in response to student altercations at Shemet High School seeks to assign blame for the individual actions of students to district and school leaders. As a parent, I worry for my children for a wide variety of reasons, and I completely relate to any parent who does the same. I do not, however, understand this messaging that our school leaders and teachers are not doing everything in within our power to keep our children safe. Our high school and sheriff's department provide full-time school resource officers. Every day of the week, we have an extremely unique and beneficial resource with our school-based health center, which makes a wide variety of medical and mental health resources and linkages available to any student who seeks to utilize them. Our district staffs our high school with counselors and social workers to address the social, emotional health and well-being of our students, along with access to educational programs that are targeted to promote citizenship, empathy, drug awareness, and resistance. I know these programs are available because my children have benefited from them in the nearly nine years they have attended St. Bernard Parish Public Schools. Our school is simply a reflection of our community, and by and large, it is a reflection that I love to look at, full of scholars, athletes, and performing artists to achieve amazing things. I see my children and their classmates achieve incredible things every school year while making fantastic memories that will last a lifetime. I have had the privilege to have been colleagues with many of our teachers, school, and district leaders, and witnessed their lifetime dedication to the calling of educating children and running a school system. I see the countless hours they put in that most know nothing about preparing for school each year, implementing new policies, and finding ways to work with policies that are thrust upon them by elected officials at state and federal legislative levels who often have no true idea of what it takes on a daily basis to educate and care for children. Unfortunately, the world at large is not a perfect place, and some people choose to make poor and destructive decisions that are beyond anyone's control. It is even more unfortunate that in these moments, we now live in a society set on emphasizing them, resharing them, livestreaming them, and generally reveling in them. These incidents are responded to, addressed, and handled with the utmost seriousness by school and district leaders, and all consequences and policies are enforced up to the limits that are set upon them by both state and federal law. Should those laws and restrictions legislated and mandated upon our school leaders bother you, I would urge you to consider them foremost in your future ballot casting and candidate selections. More than anything, as a parent of lifelong St. Bernard Parish Public School students, I want to thank our school's teachers, principals, our district's leaders, many of whom have dedicated lifetimes to educating children for what they do each and every day. I also thank concerned parents wishing to further the discussion and be involved in their children's education and development. They are first and foremost important teachers of their children, the most important teachers of their children. I urge everyone to lower the temperature of the conversation and avoid rhetoric. Let any communication celebrate the wonderful achievements of our school system and its children while always being willing to discuss paths forward together for their benefit.
Thank you. Next signs up to speak, Rob Larson. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Larson, and I have two small children in our district's schools. January 20th, a disgusting display of violence at Shemet High was made public. The superintendent remained silent on the issue. January 30th, a massive hallway brawl at Shemet High was made public. Superintendent Starzvoce sounded the rallying cry of "It's not as bad as it looks." February 10th, a 14-year-old child was murdered on Golden Drive in our Lacoste Elementary Community. Superintendent Voeche's response was to deploy the sheriff's office to our school buildings, almost accidentally shooting a theater employee at Shemet High. February 15th, local news ran a story proving Superintendent Voeche worked to shelter a central office executive's child from sexual misconduct charges, and then paid the family over $300,000 of district money amidst the concealment. February 16th, a video was publicly posted of someone with an ankle monitor entering Shemet High and instigating another brawl. Superintendent Voeche was allowed to lie once again to the public, stating the individual only made his way to the office. March 24th, a 17-year-old child was shot one block from St. Bernard Middle School. In response, community activist The Storyteller posted a piece entitled "The Beginning of the End," including a video of Principal Wayne Warner being pushed to the ground during a fight on campus. This would be the second time in a single school year Mr. Warner was assaulted on public video. March 28th, in response- March 28th, in response to public outcry, this board demanded that Superintendent Voce speak to school safety, and member Henry Rodriguez asked to reincorporate public comments at public meetings. April 11th, as media attention from all the violence died down and school drew to a close, members Jackson, Lee Bowman, Long, Lemoine, Dysart, Warner, and White chose to vote down public comment, directly showing the public that if the media isn't present, these members do not care to hear from their constituents. This same day, these same members additionally stood publicly to chastise member Harris for daring to suggest the board meet together to bond and learn to effectively communicate with one another. May 5th, a 13-year-old brought a gun onto Tris Middle School's campus in a direct attempt to threaten retaliation for the imprisonment of a friend. May 9th, an enraged public once again showed up to speak to this board. Superintendent Voce spent two hours speaking to the board regarding a plan for discipline, only to later edit the content when publicly posted on this district's own archive. At the first meeting of this school term on August 8th, Superintendent Voce's action was to suggest further limiting free speech of parents and students alike with a slew of new internal policy. At tonight's meeting after these speeches, this board is literally scheduled to vote to silence its own constituency. The public has access to no less than nine videotaped altercations occurring within the walls of Chalmers High School within the first 10 days of this school year. On Friday, August 18th, a massive brawl resulted in the tasing of at least two children and received attention from our locals' news outlets. Superintendent was allowed to go on public television and lie yet again, both stating that fights aren't that common, and that only one student was tased during the incident.
Okay, that is your time.
Not only has the public currently possessed multiple different views of the incident in question to directly contradict her tasing claims, but the same exact SRO on video Friday, tasing children, is also on video Thursday, throwing a female student to the ground.
Mr. Larson, that's your time. Thank you.
When privately questioned on her comments.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
When privately questioned on her comments.
That is your time. Thank you.
Superintendent Voce attempted to tell a parent via phone on Monday what she meant to say with "serious fighting" is not common.
Mr. Larson, that's your time.
I would like Superintendent Voce to directly answer tonight what she deems to be serious fighting, and what she considers to be everyday fighting that our parents should expect.
Next for public comment, Trudy Alborado. Trudy Alborado. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to make the comment that we are really here to work with you and not against you, but we would also really like for you, we need you to work with us. And I came here to talk about public safety, but I just want to make one comment, Ms. Voce, about the charter school application process. So you're telling me that we do not have any out-of-district students at Chalmers High School? Okay, maybe you can answer the question. And I know it's a mandate by the federal government, but as an excerpt from the St. Bernard Parish website, it says, "In compliance with revised Statute 173982, the St. Bernard Parish School Board is making public through our website and in printed form upon request, the guidelines for submitting a charter proposal." And excuse me, I assumed that this was happening. Mostly because of what I hear from other parents, teachers, former teachers, bus drivers, Chalmers High School is overcrowded, and that's where all this tension is coming from. But I also heard there's two gangs in Chalmers High School. I don't know that to be a fact, it may be hearsay, but just like you were saying, make the child make a choice. Do you want to be in a gang, or do you want to be in a school? Okay? And then if they want to be a gang, then they leave the school, just like the gentleman was going to be escorted out of this meeting because of, I'll call it, inappropriate behavior, because he went overtime. But our children are not suffering enough consequences. If the punishment fit the crime, these children would be expelled. A child that would kick and kick and kick another child, that child could have brain damage if the teacher hadn't thrown himself upon that child. This is not -- this is not what teachers are supposed to be doing. We want our children educated, and we understand they cannot be educated under this condition. You say you want them to thrive. Our children have to hide. They have to run in the hallways just to get away from danger. And maybe it's not present every day, but it is present every day. I wouldn't want to walk to my place of business if I had to walk and know I might get carjacked, I might get hit over the head. You know, I can't function, and I can't expect the children to function under those conditions. And like I said, I appreciate the fact that you're helping us. I'm a little upset that we are actually considering moving a current school to appease the Port of New Orleans, when we won't build another school to appease the parish residents. My family has lived in this parish since 1950. We all went to school in this parish. I feel guilty, because I'm not sending my grandkids to a private school. Are you sending your kids to Chalmers High School? And I shouldn't have to defend myself, because my child should. It's a great school. It's got great opportunities for these children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next signed up to speak, Scott Jones.
Thank you for letting me speak. Let me preface by saying, I'm not laying blame. I'm just looking for solutions, transparency, and clarification. And we were saying that there's no students allowed to be in the school that aren't from this district. Well, just because it's not allowed, doesn't mean it isn't happening. And at last count, which is a hard number to find, by the way, we contacted the school, school board, and fire department, to find the exact number of students at Chalmers High. And they can't tell us the capacity, so how do we know if it's overcrowded? We don't. We're telling you all it's overcrowded. We're not asking. Also, you know, obviously, we have a discipline problem, and multiple kids have been in issues, and those kids need to be dealt with. And they need to be dealt with firmly, rather than being treated with kick gloves. And these programs we have, they might be available, but no one here knows about them. All these programs that y'all preach about, I don't know about. No one here knows about them. We also need to thank the sheriff's office and the teachers. They don't get paid enough to do what they're doing. And I've seen the school resource officer calling to attack for their decision. No one was there to help, except for them. So I do applaud them and thank them for their intervention. But it happens too often in a school. This school is known for its good academics. That's not being reported. It's known for its good athletics. That's not being reported. All that's being reported is the fights and the violence in these schools. And we're just asking that, you know, maybe they have some sort of anger management, some sort of home intervention. We have DARE programs. Why don't we have violence prevention programs? I think that would benefit the students more than a DARE program at this point. And if I say something out of pocket on social media, I get in trouble at my job. Maybe we need to start monitoring these kids' social media. And even though I've been told multiple times that some of these instances have been recorded just for clout and for posts, innocent kids still get caught up in it. And innocent kids are afraid to go to school because of it. And all I'm asking for is a little clarification. We need clear guidelines for what is punishments. We need a stricter policy on violence that happens at school, with no exceptions. There needs to be a zero tolerance policy. We've come to that point. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next signs up to speak is Molly Renteria.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is my first meeting. I'm not a native Chalmation, and my son has only been attending CHS for a year and a half. We came in halfway through last semester. And I am frankly surprised at the level of shenanigans that I hear about from my teenage child on a daily basis. I think, I'm not sure what the turnout is normally for these types of meetings, but I think that the turnout this evening would be a good show of faith that all of the parents are concerned about the education and, you know, the safety of their children, especially in light of recent events. I did make a few notes while everyone was speaking. You referenced the previous emergency crisis and strategic planning measures that had been discussed at previous meetings. Obviously, I was not privy to those, so I wanted to request if those could be added to tonight's meetings, perhaps as a footnote for easy reference for parents. I don't want to play the blame game. I don't think it's the teacher's responsibility, or the school administration, or the parents, all individually. It takes a village to raise these kids, and to be good stewards and role models for our children. They're going to emulate bad behavior that they see, and they're going to emulate positive behavior that we see. Some of the recommendations that I have, perhaps it could be taken note of to move forward, are tiered start schedules, start and end of the school day, perhaps bell releases in between classes. I've only been in the school a handful of times. When the bell rings, it's just total chaos, total chaos in the halls. Perhaps limiting how much foot flow goes through there would also diminish opportunities for students to fight one another. I'd like to suggest establishing a parent-led volunteer organization, as well as student-led advocacy groups. I think it's important to teach our children that they are stewards of their own future, and to give them an opportunity to empower and encourage them to work with the school board and their administrators to guide their own future, so they can be successful adults as they exit high school and move on to college. I don't know if the school has a safety and violence prevention committee, but I would like to suggest one as another opportunity. And I'd like to suggest changes to the school's communication system. As a new student, last year, my son was attacked by nine other students in the bathroom. He sat in the school's office for three hours before I was alerted that he had been in a fight, for which he was expelled. Now, thankfully, my child is a gold medal junior Olympian, so they just picked the wrong one when they decided to attack him, and he defended himself and was not critically injured. You know, but why did it take three hours for the school to notify me that my son was attacked? When I get an automated phone call that my kid was five minutes late to class, "You missed first period, you missed second period, you missed lunch, you owe $50 because you lost your charger," I get all these automated phone calls, you know, for things I'm already aware of. Most recently, on Friday, I got an automated call from the system to say there had been an incident at the school. Within a minute of hanging up my phone, there was a press release. And finally, and I'm wrapping it up, I apologize. I hear a lot about Rowley, the alternate school, which, according to my teenager, is kind of like the pipe way to prison, if you will, where all the kids learn from all the other bad kids. Perhaps we could offer online learning as an alternative to grouping those children together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next signs up to speak, Robin Henderson. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for all who have been this meeting and allowing me a chance to speak. My name is Robin Henderson. I am one of a group of parents that are very concerned about the safety of our students. Parents have questions that are going unanswered. We have concerns we want to share with you. We have solutions to share with you also. I am inviting each member of this school board to participate in a panel town hall meeting held by the Concerned Parents for Students of St. Bernard School Group. This will be held on Monday, August 28th, at 6:00 PM at the St. Bernard Government Center Council chambers. We genuinely hope each and every one of you come so we can have a productive conversation, is our goal, along with every parent that is here. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Marie Griffin. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. I appreciate all the work you all are doing, and listening to all the parents here. Appreciate Sharon Pullman and his team being there to protect the students. I'm really going to make it short, because I don't want to be redundant. The school is grossly overcrowded. That is a major part of the problem. To correct something the representative said on the port, she said it was the best interest of the school board. I'd have to disagree and say the best interest of the school board are the children, not a port. Secondly, I would like to say that we need to have more than two security officers. With a school that size and the foot traffic that is in the hallways, the two security officers is not enough. We are grateful that the gentleman that was there took action and did what he needed to do, but it is just not enough. The teacher that sacrificed himself to protect that student, more than grateful. Teachers are not paid high enough to be in self-defense classes against students. We need to talk more about mental health services within the school. I believe that that is not being addressed nearly enough. The counselors are not doing enough with the children. Coming from a child who forced himself to throw up, so that he didn't have to go to school because he was afraid, because he got bullied so bad that he didn't think that he was worth being in the school, because he didn't think his life was worth it. So through numerous outside counseling resources, because I sent multiple emails, multiple phone calls went unanswered, emails not read, to advocate for my son to get help with counseling and therapy, school counselors brushed it off, sent him to outside. They're not equipped to deal with those types of positions, but as a school counselor, the word counseling means what exactly? So we need to address those issues and get them more on board with the children and talk. And even if it is an all-together meeting with the children in the gymnasium, let them know that those services are available to them, that they feel that they can be comfortable talking to counselors, therapists, mental health advocacy matters, and there is not enough of that being addressed in the school board as it is today. My last and final thing will be that I would appreciate it if the school board, with all the work that you do and the information that you receive, please, please listen to the parents, the guardians. Everyone that is here today is here because we care, and we are trying our absolute best to make a difference in our children's lives. So before we listen to a port, before we listen to anything else, listen to parents, please. Participate in our lives and participate with our children. Be there for them mentally, emotionally, and physically. I think more of that needs to be done. And before we even acknowledge having another school be built and taking funding for them, we need to acknowledge taking funding for a second high school. Thank you.
Next to speak is Heather DeBoes. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, don't want to be redundant. We all have the same issues, the same problems. We're really happy that everybody's here to discuss it. The safety is, should be a priority at this point. Sadly, education needs to be, but safety... Sadly, education needs to be, but safety is what is under attack. I have five children in the public school system, three of which attend Chalmat High School. My eldest is very adamant that his little brother and sister do not attend, because they will not be safe there. That's a problem, coming from a seventeen-year-old. So again, not to be redundant, we're going to have the town hall. Hopefully, we can discuss that. But my immediate thing where I believe you, as a school board, can help alleviate some families, is homeschool children being a lot of the time and the opportunity to participate in extracurriculars. I have the luxury, and sadly, I know a lot of people do not, but I have the luxury to homeschool my children. They play every sport. So that is the only reason at this point they are enrolled at Chalmat High School. And I shouldn't have to, as a mother, weigh out the safety or their happiness. I shouldn't have to do this. And there's plenty of districts in Louisiana that allow their homeschool children to participate in theater, in engineering, in sports. And I don't understand why we are not allowed that opportunity. If I keep them home, whether they're in school, or I keep them home and educate them myself because they feel unsafe, and I think we can all agree, it is not safe. And that's not on your end, that's not on the sheriff's end, that is on the children's end in the homes. But they're not safe, and that can keep them safer at home, and I should be allowed that opportunity without penalizing them and saying you cannot participate in things you've done your entire life. So that's what I would like y'all to look into.
Next up to speak, Bo Bowman. Okay, thank you. Next, James Gonzalez. Is James Gonzalez here? Okay, if not, we will move forward to Nisha Ankale.
Hi there, good night again for having me. I'm here to safety of the kids. I've heard a lot of what was said tonight, and over the weekend, had many phone calls with many people. The first gentleman that got up and spoke, he gave some facts. Yes, I did see the video like everyone else, and it was horrible. That is not the first fight. There's fights daily, if not almost daily, in Chalmat High. So we need to address that and get to the bottom of that. Yes, the fight was horrible. I'm still on the fence of what should have actually taken place. However, I would like to know what's the policy. Glad the resource officers was there. But with all of the fights in the past, how many times was a taser used? And what is the policy of the taser being used? I would address that to Sheriff Pullman, since he said that that's his policy. Also, with the taser, what is our standard? Since, like I said, there's fights almost daily, how many times are we going to be pulling out a taser and tasing kids? So what is the policy and what is the standard for the tasers? Besides the overcrowdedness, that's only a piece of the problem, because I've seen many fights where overcrowdedness had nothing to do with it. So we need to get to the bottom of why are these kids fighting? Whether it be bringing in some therapists, some psychotherapists? I heard the young lady before said that she had to seek other avenues and resources because the school was not equipped to accommodate her son. So we need to get to the bottom of what is going on. I would have you to know the fights, it is blacks, it is whites, it is boys, and it is girls. So I just need you all to know that. Also, we do welcome Sheriff Pullman, that program that you were talking about. I did have some discussions with some community leaders about that over the weekend. To bring in more resource officers, I don't think that is the all-and-done answer, but we do need community involvement. This is all of our kids, and we do need to get to the bottom of what is going on. I've heard a second high school being floated around a number of times. That is not the answer either, if we do not get to the bottom of why these fights are occurring in the first place. Because a second high school, now you're going to be faced with fights in both high schools, almost on a daily basis. And when you're talking about a second high school, remember, we have one high school because of Katrina. And I don't know if it was solely you, Ms. Vosche, who made that decision that we're going to go with one high school, but that's the decision that has been made for the parish. So before we build a second high school, look into upgrading, expanding, doing whatever, because right now, Chalmat is considered a state of the art. So we're not going to stand here and let you just go open up a second high school just to appease, and it's not to the same standards and the equality of Chalmat High. So inflation, it's twenty, almost twenty years later, so if you're going to build a second high school, we want it to look like Chalmat looks. Thank you.
Next to speak, Chad Merritt. Good evening.
Good evening, board. I hate to say, it's great to see y'all again, you know, but it's really not, you know. I only come up here when there's big problems, like what's going on now and all. You know, but I got to say, you know, the overcrowding, I warned y'all over and over last year. How many times have y'all seen me up here? How many meetings on YouTube you got me up here? I've warned y'all, the overcrowding is happening, the amount of numbers of children coming out of the middle school, going into the high school, and the children that's graduating from only Chalmat High School, the only high school we have, is overcrowded. Now, the numbers that y'all putting on the internet and all, eh, that's false. That's guaranteed. There definitely, there's be a better study on that. There ain't no way. All right, so look, you crowd a bunch of kids in a corner, they're going to conflict, they're going to, they're going to, mayhem is going to happen. It's going to happen. I told y'all over and over last year, we needed a second high school. We have to. The school's there, St. Bernard High School. Y'all don't have to build another high school. The high school is there. The numbers of your middle schools are low. Move the kids out of the high school, that used to be St. Bernard High School, it's St. Bernard Middle now, move them out of the school and distribute them to the other middle schools. You have your high school already. You don't need to build another one. It would save a ton of money. Now, like that, don't forget, I've told y'all, y'all saved a quarter million on that insurance policy last year. Put that where that money went to, it goes towards school. All right. Mr. Warner saying on the loudspeaker that children have consequences about video and fights. All the kids heard, all the teachers heard. What's that about? How are children going to have consequences on video and fights? Is that illegal? Just saying. Sheriff needs to come up with something, I would say, implement a law or something to make these parents responsible. Because it's not the kids. The kids grow, the kids only know what the parents taught them. So if they know what they know, what the parish, the ones that need to serve the consequences, especially for the repeat offenders. We need to come up with some kind of, not law, right? They've got to go through all the steps to make a law, but something to make the parents Warner, all right, Ms. Doris. All right, you lied on national news about fights. You said that it's a small group, right? Which you told me all last year, too, it's a small group. I don't understand how this small group ain't got dealt with yet, first off. Secondly, you said about that the small group, and you said that it rarely happens. But yet, every day since the school started, you've had one to two fights every day, almost, every day. And you did not, you said rarely on national news. Come on now. We need the truth. That's all we're here for, is ask for the truth. But we also ask for results. We need results. If you know there's a small group, you said this to me last year, if you know there's a small group, figure out how to get rid of that small group. Figure out how to make that small group answer for their activities that they're doing. There has to be repercussions.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to speak, Lance Rodney. Good evening.
Good evening. Lance Rodney, from Violet, Louisiana. I've been coming to these meetings quite a bit sometime now, and a lot of what everybody says is basically what I was going to say, and I don't like to waste too much time. We have three classifications of infractions that we put into place in the last couple of months, and those infractions should stand. I hope it's a working document. I hope that we can improve it, make things work for the better of the student's safety, because I don't want to see things like tasing happen to a child. That's, you don't know what that child could have had. He could have had a physical problem, he could have had a health problem, you know? But those were excessive measures to me. Any parent don't want to see their child get tased. But I think we should be careful in that manner, because we don't want that tasing to be across the board. So many times that happen across the United States, kids are getting tased. But they have lethal weapons, they have, they're fighting teachers or whatnot, but this was just simply a fight. It was a brutal fight. I saw it, it was a very brutal fight. However, I think immediate decisions could have been thought of before tasing. You had teachers out there, you had a resource officer, only one resource officer I've seen, but he immediately pulled the taser. And the second time, when he pulled it, the first time, he grabbed a kid, he held him down, and he told her to get down. Kid didn't want to get down, he tased him as well. So I just don't know what to say. I hope it's a working document. I hope that we can solve these problems without any lethal force, because the next situation is to that, is pulling a gun. And I don't definitely want to see some police officer or resource officer pull a gun. That would be the next step besides a taser, lethal force. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak, Kayla Mann.
Hey, y'all doing? So the consensus of parents seems to be that Chalmat High is overcrowded. And while I'm not denying that, I feel like the real question is, is the overcrowded halls really affecting these students' education? I don't think so. If I'm not mistaken, there was a student last year that got accepted into Yale. We have students graduating with their high school diplomas and associate's degrees from Nuno's Community College that same day, and there's so, so much more. The struggles, while being addressed, should not be overshadowing the many, many great things that this high school does for its students. With the hard work and dedication of amazing teachers, faculty, and administration, the IEP support, oh, IEP support team members, my son has excelled in St. Bernard Parish Schools and surpassed everything that doctors and therapists told me he would never be able to accomplish in his life. And I owe a lot of that to people that I see in this room. I truly believe with everything in me that you could not find a more dedicated and loving group of teachers, staff, or administration anywhere than we have here in St. Bernard Parish. And I'm not going to stand up here and yell and misplace blame, because at sixteen or seventeen years old, the only person to blame for your behavior is you. Some people are saying parents, but on Friday, I saw parents, grown men, yelling at female faculty members outside of Chalmat High School. And they were screaming because of the behaviors of a group of teenagers while they're out there not acting much better themselves. So I'm just saying, the blame goes on the students, nobody else. And lastly, anyone that truly knows me is going to tell you I'm a helicopter mom to the highest degree. The list of people I allow to watch my kids could fit on a stick of gum wrapper. Yet I send all three of my most precious things in my life to St. Bernard Parish School every day, and I trust y'all with them. My son tells me every day he feels safe, because I ask him. And Mr. Warner, Ms. Mump, Mr. Schneider, I trust y'all with my boy, and I know y'all doing everything y'all can for him. So I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, I know we got a lot going on, but thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fred Everhart.
Let me say this. Sheriff Pullman made all the sense in the world. Our children are acting the way they act because of their home life. When I was young, just like every one of you, we, I broke, I did something wrong, I got the belt. If I didn't put the garbage out, it was in my bed. If I didn't cut the grass, the door was locked until I cut the grass. And I respect my mom and I love her to death for what she did when we was children, because it made me into the man I am today. I commend the officers at that school. It was a brutal fight, and it could have got way worse if nobody was there to help, that was trained to stop it. I have, I'm a grandpa that sends, I take care of my grandson. He's in, this is first year in Chalmat Ninth Grade Academy. I think it's an awesome factor, we, faculty, all from school, he loves it. But I do feel sending my son, my grandson, to Chalmat next year, because, not only for his safety, but for his learning, and, because he's kind of, he needs a little more attention than others. And when you have classrooms that's full of kids, I don't know how many classrooms on an average kid, Ms. Doris, I'm just curious. How many kids is in a classroom on an average classroom?
This is comment only, but we can speak to that.
I heard it was a lot. But when I was growing up in Chalmat, at St. Bernard High School, I graduated in 1987, and we didn't have nowhere near the kids in the class, and we knew everyone, we knew where they lived, where each everybody lived, and we had a one-on-one relationship with our teacher, and it was real close. And she had the time to go to each one of us personally and sit down and help us and discuss issues that was, we was pertaining to our books, our school books. I don't think that our children get that now, and I may be wrong, and don't hold me tight, but my son graduated from Chalmat High School, and he said that the classrooms was overcrowded, crowded, and the hallways, and going from class to class was overcrowded. So I believe him. Some kind of way, we have to find a way, I don't know how, or what it is, to open up another high school, just like everybody else does. I believe St. Bernard High School is my alumni. I have a lot of memories there, and I think y'all need to look into doing that. Lastly, I commend each and every one of you guys. Y'all are entrusted with our very, very most precious being that we control our children.
Thank you, Mr. Everhart.
It's all about you guys, so my heart's out to y'all.
That's your time. Thank you. Next to speak, we have Chris Ladriguez. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Ms. Vosche, you had mentioned earlier the organizations that are working in the schools. I heard a parent suggested, they're not familiar with those organizations. I, along with Mr. Showalter and many other people, founded the Driven Youth Organization that goes to the schools. I've walked the hallways, I've hung out with the teachers. I'm a graduate of St. Bernard Parish, Andrew Jackson, Wookel Colonels. But- But if I can speak for them in a moment, not to, I'm not, I'm trying to let you know that I'm not up here as just a regular guy. You could speak to just about every principal in the room, and they could speak to my commitment and my involvement into the schools. You could speak to Sheriff Pullman. We've done several rallies together. You could speak to different teachers in the school, all the schools as well. What I would ask is, I'm not going to tell you how to do your job, because I don't envy you. What, what you guys have had to kind of sit through tonight, nobody in this room wants to be in your seat, and so I want to let you know that I respect you guys for what you're doing. I use an analogy while preaching, I'm the pastor of the Tabernacle Church on Parish Road, in case you didn't know. An analogy while preaching is, if you fell and you busted your leg open, and I needed to give you stitches, and you just sew that wound up, I need two things. I need thread, and I need a needle. Those two things could not be more polar opposite of each other, but without each other, they cannot accomplish the task. Right now, Chalmers High is bleeding. It's got a wound and it's bleeding. Here's a quote from a student that I have interacted with in the hallways. If I don't fight in school, where I know somebody will break it up, and I fight outside, there's a good chance I get shot. That's a quote from a student that has been echoed by a teacher two very different times. I've had students call me, I've had, I should say, I've had a parent call me years ago, literally banging down their bathroom door because their daughter is about to swallow a bottle full of Vicodin, and I was able to help get that student to walk off the ledge, got him connected to the Student Services Council at the school. That student today is married with three kids. I'm not, I mentor youth pastors across the country. Let us help you. What Sheriff Pullman says, as far as starting a group, I've met with Brother Henry Ballard, who pastors Christian Fellowship down in Violet. We are committing to you not to complain, not to tell you how to do your job. I'm committing to you personally, giving you my word, that as much as you will let me and Brother Ballard and the other churches in this community help you, we will, because this is our community, and we're going to be here after every term limit runs out, after every teacher retires. I'm going to be here for the rest of my life, and these students matter, these kids matter. So whatever we can do to help, please let us help you. Whatever Sheriff Pullman needs, he knows I'm here for it. So thank you for all you're doing, and we, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, Bobo Men. Good evening.
Board, I would like to say something to you, and I would like you to think about it a moment. Legally, your right to receive an education in St. Bernard Parish ends when you jeopardize the health and safety of other students. Simply put, parents on this side are scared, they're angry, and they're frustrated. The board duly so as well. What everybody in here needs to remember, there's two people responsible for this incident at Chalmers High, the student and the parent. Simply put, you're a board of education, you set educational standards, you're not their personal babysitter. You're not here to raise their children for them. So we've got to set a strong message to these students, and they are just a small amount of students amongst the thousands we have doing the best they possibly can in our school system. What I saw was a student who brutally attacked another student while on the ground. That is not a fight, that is an assault. I say that we call it what it is. Anytime you punch a student who's on the ground three times and kick them multiple times while they are on the ground, it is not a fight, it's an assault. So I call on this board to seek an end to this, and this is the end that I would recommend to you. I would recommend that we ask the district attorney to prosecute this student and students involved to the fullest extent of the law. These students do not belong at Chalmers High, they belong in Chalmers Jail. The deputy who discharged his taser to prevent further injury and violence, even though he had knowledge that he was in a school setting with school students, that officer is trained in use of force. I say to him, "Officer, you did your duty, and I commend you for it." Teachers who risk to protect other students from physical bodily harm, and if you saw student, if you saw teachers laying across the top of students trying to protect them, I will say that you are an honor to your profession. You are cherished assets of our students. To the parents involved in this event and your students, we have thousands of students in our educational facilities here in St. Bernard Parish who are working tirelessly to do the very best that they can. If you want to send a substandard student with substandard behavior to our school, no, send them to a substandard school.
Thank you. That's your time. Okay, this, this concludes the list of everyone that was here this evening for public comment. On behalf of the board, I want to thank each and every one of you who came tonight to speak, to share your thoughts, your insights, your suggestions. I know myself, I took four or five pages of notes from comments that, that all of you have said, and we are going to take this under advisement so that we can continue to make decisions that are best for our students, our family, and our community. We will remain committed that safety and security is our top priority. I want to thank all of the board members for unanimously voting to add this item to the agenda and allow the public to speak on this, so that we can hear your input. I think the common thread from a lot of the comments that we heard tonight is we cannot do this work alone. We are dependent upon each and every one of you to stay engaged in this process, our families, our sheriff's department, our outstanding community groups that are coming forward with great suggestions. Together, we can work to create a better environment for our students. I want to echo the sentiment that our teachers are truly heroes, that go above and beyond the call of duty every day for our students. Thank you. Thank you. In a time where we have a national shortage of teachers, we see our teachers stepping up to go above and beyond. Thank you. We know that in a lot of these cases, this is beyond the scope of work that you signed up to do. We want to keep you safe and protected and support you, just like we want our families and our students to be safe. So please stay engaged with us as we sincerely and genuinely take all of these comments under advisement, so that we can make decisions to best support our students. And again, thank you to Ms. Voce for your leadership. This is not easy, and so we know that you are putting in long hours. I know that you are talking to families, you are talking to, to each of us and our school administrators, so we thank you. At this time, before we move on, are there any comments from the board? Ms. Harris.
Sure, it's actually just a point of clarification. Superintendent, you said that we had 11 social workers and school counselors on campus. Can you differentiate between the two? How many social workers do we have, and how many academic counselors do we have?
We have the grade-level school counselors, so there are four of those. We've got an addition, an additional 504 who deals primarily with 504 students. We have, who deal with the special ed students. We also have two additional behavioral therapists who are either licensed social workers or behavioral therapists. We have another social worker who licensed to, works in the pupil appraisal department directly with the students, and that makes up the 11. And then we have another one, really, in the school-based health center that also deals with the students there as well that I haven't mentioned.
And then, I guess a follow-up question, and this might be something for later on in the agenda to put on to the meeting next, at our next committee meeting, but there's revised statute 17:416 dot 15 that allows school districts to implement a zero tolerance policy for physical violence. Is that something that we can discuss as maybe a change within our policies that we do not allow and do not accept physical violence in our schools?
That is something that we can discuss if we're looking at that change in that policy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Rodriguez.
Am I allowed to, am I allowed to address the public? Or not?
I think you can certainly make a final comment, yes.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming here. It was real civil. The purpose, when I put on the motion to find out about the status of Willie Smith School, it wasn't, in my opinion, myself, it wasn't to say I'm for the port or against the port. I just wanted to know the status of the school, because I've been on the board seven, seven months, and I had no clue about the school, and I wasn't by myself on this board, because it wasn't brought up, because of everything going on. So in my opinion, I have no opinion on whether to move the school or not, I just wanted to know what the options were going to be when that time come. Naturally, if the people in that community are against moving the school, of course, I would go with the community, that's where they live. But if the port's coming, you heard what she said, it might not be an international terminal, but something's going to be there in industrial capacity. With that being said, the people of the community, because the land's been bought and it's going to be used, the people of the community is going to have to make a decision if they want the school to be open with noise, vibrations, dust, well, if they think that's fine for their community, they want the school to stay there, well, that's fine. But if they think it should be moved, and you get a new school in another location, if that's what they think, and it's going to be paid, it's going to be brand new. If they think that's the way to go, I'm going to be for that. The purpose wasn't to sell the school right away, it was just to get the options. And I think, you know, everything went fine with that, so I just, that's my opinion of why I brought the port here. So I just want everybody to know, whatever the community thinks they should do, I'm going to be for that. And I want to also say about the safety issue, the, the person that said about the meeting on the 28th, I'll be there, and I think that's a great idea, and I think some board members will show up to get input from the community. At the, at the end of this meeting, I'm going to try to put on, I'm going to put on the agenda to discuss about forming a committee that'll meet monthly, that can get input from the public on policies and procedures. It'll be held, I don't know how it's going to end up being, because I'm going to need help, but I would like the community to be able to come, not when there's a meeting, but come on a separate, on a separate night, maybe once a month, maybe first Wednesday of the month, and come here and give their concerns and input, and they can come speak about anything they want, you know? So I'm still working on that, and I'm not trying to be a troublemaker or anything like that. I just think people want input, and I'm retired, so I can, I have time, you know? So time's not a problem with me, and I'll be at every meeting. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, and I echo your sentiment and want to thank, we had a huge crowd tonight, and I want to thank each and every one of you for being so respectful and attentive and, and really sticking it out with us to have this dialogue. Ms. Rodney.
Pretty much the same as, well, member Rodriguez, I want to thank everybody who came out today. Everybody knows this is not the normal crowd. We don't get this much attention on a regular basis. So on this side of the table, I want to charge everybody who came out today to keep coming, and all for this relationship that I heard everybody talk about, because everyone came from several angles of what happened at Chalmers. But the common ground is you guys know that we need you, you need us, in order to make it a safe space for the kids, regardless if it's just Chalmers, regardless if another school pops up, whatever. It has to be a working relationship. So first and foremost, I want to say, keep the eyes of communication open, because you're not, you're never going to know what's happening unless you come in here and see us do what we do. Secondly, Sheriff Pullman, I'm a social worker by trade. Whatever program you want to implement, I will come and help you with that program. Because my thing is, when I looked at that video, and any video, because as a school board member, I noticed a lot of videos come through my Facebook. Every video that happens, I have to see it. What I did notice is, and it may just be the social worker in me, I am fearful for the child that is being assaulted by all means, but my heart bleeds for the child to think that's okay to assault somebody. So therefore, that's a broken child, and I'm not comfortable with throwing him or her away. Him or her, just because you don't have the type of parenting that the status quo says doesn't mean that you're a throwaway kid. Everybody does not parent in, everybody does not parent in the same style that everyone does. And speaking as a generation, a Generation Xer, I know good and well the new kids are not being, being parented the way I parent, but I'm not downing that parent, because he or she is the best parent, she knows how to be. So where they're broken, yes, it is our charge as a community to come in and fix it. Our community is not just the residents that you live in, it's the school that you attend, it's the teachers that you encounter, it's the school board members that you see at award ceremonies. All of us have a hand in rearing kids. So don't ever think that, oh, it's not my problem, because my kids are good. That's not it. It's not just your kid, it's everybody's kid. When we get back to the, the air that I can honestly correct your child, because your child is not doing something, we're going to be okay, but those days may be long gone. So what we have to do is, where those kids do not get maybe what we perceive the proper supervision and the proper care at home, it's okay to be that good teacher to provide that. And I commend any teacher who's here today, or anybody who's listening via the YouTube video. It takes a lot to do what you do, and to get paid what you get paid, and I commend you for that. Never let challenges run you away. Make your voice known. If you have to make it known through Ms. Voce to get to us, then we're going to do what we have to do. I didn't get elected to not, to put blinders on to things. The child that's being expelled, the child that's being assaulted, the child who witnessed it, the child who videoed it, I'm here for everybody. And I want programs that reach all of those kids, because yes, Chalmers is a stellar school. I had two girls who came out of Chalmers on different edges of the spectrum. One was an honor student, one had an IEP since she hit Chalmers. And yes, I do know our system is not always the best when handling things, but if you are a helicopter parent, you get stuff done. But if you don't know how to be a helicopter parent, you fall through the cracks. That should not be the case. So whatever program, including Driven, anything you want, you need help with me for, I will give you this much of time that I have left in my life, because I do have five kids, but I am here, not as a school board member Rodney, but as Kisa Rodney, a resident of Violet, a lifelong resident of Violet, to help you at any aspect you need. But I want to make sure we reach all the kids, not just the kid that's assaulted, but that kid who did the assault, because there is a disconnect in this.
Thank you, Ms. Rodney. Any final comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess before we move on to Agenda Item Three, so that our board members can use the restroom and get a short break. I don't need to go. Okay, thank you all. We will now move forward with the agenda. Agenda Item Three is an approval, or 3.1 is an approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee Meeting Minutes of August 8th, 2023, into the August 22nd, 2023 regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Agenda Item 3.2 is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of June 27th, 2023, as published on August 11th, 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Harris, seconded by Ms. White. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 4.1, our Personnel Changes for August 2023, and we have Ms. Pritchard with us this evening. Thank you for staying this late night to present this item. Thank you.
So you should have the recent changes, the ones since the last meeting, remember, are in yellow. are in yellow, they're highlighted in yellow. I was kind of hoping the crowd would stay so I could recruit some bus drivers. We really need bus drivers right now, so we're looking for anybody with a CDL and a good driving record. That's what we're looking for.
Okay, and information on those positions are available on our website?
Yes, yes. They can apply on our website for all positions.
Okay, I'll give everybody a moment to look through, and this item is for information Anything else, Ms. Pritchard? Okay, thank you very much.
All righty, thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 5.1 is the approval of the St. Bernard Parish Public Schools 2023-2024 Pupil Progression Plan. We did discuss this at the previous meeting, and we do have a recommendation by the committee. We have Ms. Harleton here this evening to answer any questions that you may have.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mrs. White. Any further comments or questions for Ms. Harleton? And again, we did discuss this at the previous meeting, but she is here to answer any questions that you may have. Okay, seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Good night, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Harleton, for being with us this late night. Agenda Item Number 5.2 is the adoption of the 2023 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any questions or comments? We do have Mr. Fernandez here, we did discuss this at the prior meeting. Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 5.3 is the adoption of the revision of the school board policy BCBI, and this was a recommendation by the committee. We do have Mr. Morales here who presented this item at the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of 5.3.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any further comments or questions? Ms. Harris?
So I just want to ask for clarification. This is the one where the person with a disability would have to request to, okay. I know at the previous meeting, at the committee meeting, we discussed that they would have to make that request 24 hours in advance. Could we make that 12 hours in advance to give them 12 hours to submit their information after the board agenda is published so that by 6:00 AM in the morning, the day of the meeting, that they would be able to submit that, and then we don't have to allow for any wiggle room on a policy? We can just have a black and white policy?
That's fine.
Thank you.
We can do that, that won't be a problem. So we can just change it to 12.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, do you want to phrase that in the form of a motion?
Sure, sure. A motion that we accept the policy with changing it from 24 hours in advance to 12 hours in advance.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Harris, seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 5.4 is the adoption of the revision of school board policy BCAD, which was remote participation in school board member, in school board meetings. We did, this was recommended by the committee at our previous meeting. We have a motion by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any further questions or comments on this policy?
I have a question. I'm just wondering, like, the nuts and bolts on this, how are we going to, how are we going to do this? Have we gotten that far? Are we still working on our details?
As far as, go ahead. As far as the actual, how we're going to have it set up, so we have a laptop set up.
How are we going to implement this policy?
Sure. So if somebody asks to be able to teleconference in, we'll have a laptop set up via Zoom or via meets, whatever would be easier for that person, to be able to teleconference in and address the board. So we can roll in a Promethean board, they can be as big as you want them to be, we have a laptop set up, microphone, you'll be able to hear them, they'll be able to hear you. Like any standard meeting we've probably had, kind of like since COVID has really, one of the good things, I guess, about COVID, it's helped kind of morph this into teleconference meetings all over the place. So we do definitely have the technology to make those things happen.
So we get to get the guys from Penn TV to kind of monitor that?
Jack and I have already spoken about setting up TVs, monitors, and laptops, yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any other questions or comments on this policy? Okay, and I believe we have a motion on the floor and a second, so if there are no further questions or comments, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 5.5 is the adoption of the revision of school board policy EBBB. This was a recommendation by the committee at our previous meeting. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Jackson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Number 5.6 is the adoption of the revision of school board policy JB. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Morales? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 5.7 is the adoption of the revision of school board policy JBD. This was a recommendation by the committee at our previous meeting.
I'll move that we recommended.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Long.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 5.8 is the adoption of the revision of school board policy JGCD. This was a recommendation by the committee at our previous meeting. We have a motion by Ms. Jackson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Agenda Item Number 5.9 is the adoption of school board policy EDCD. This is a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. White, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 5.10, the adoption of school board policy IDCJ. This was a recommendation by the committee at our previous meeting. Motion by Ms. Jackson? Seconded by Mr. Long. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
And finally, Agenda Item Number 5.11, the adoption of the revision of school board policy DJD. This was a recommendation by the committee at our previous meeting. Motion by Ms. Lee Bowman, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Mr. Morales, for being here with us this evening and staying late. You did an excellent job of presenting this and facilitating the dialogue at our previous meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to Agenda Item Number 6.1, which is items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda, and you do have time between our next meeting to add that. Yes, Ms. Harris?
So I have four. I'm sorry. The one that I discussed earlier, consideration of revised statute 17:416.15, developing a zero tolerance policy for physical violence. The other one would be a consideration of a review of the budget and consider...
Could you repeat that? Because I'm echoing, I can't hear what you're saying.
Sure. Zero tolerance policy, revised statute 17:416.15 for zero tolerance policy for physical violence at the high school specifically. And then to look at potentially revising the budget to invest in four additional social workers full-time at the high school level. I realize that there's a national shortage in social workers.
I can tell you right now, we have the money in the budget and...
We are looking for people, and the advertisement is out for, as Ms. Pritchard can tell you, and is shaking her head over there, for licensed social workers, so that is already in progress. So if there are people out there, please look on the website, fill out the application, and we will take those applications as soon as we get them.
Perfect. And then I have two others. One would be a request to have a brief presentation on our 2022-23 LEAP results. And my final one would be a conversation to have an efficiency and usage study on our school facilities to determine the need for and capacity of having a second high school or spreading out students from Shellman High to other buildings, and with consideration of the potential idea of moving or selling Willie Smith, what that impact would be on the community.
You said the capacity of the buildings?
Yeah, like a facility efficiency and usage study of the actual building that we have.
I can tell you the physical capacity if you wish to know it right now.
Well, no, I'm thinking if we can have like a usage study from someone to give us an idea of whether or not we have any buildings within the district that we can move students to. Is it the possibility of, I know that we may not be able to afford another high school, but is there the opportunity of moving students in a way that we can spread some students out from the main campus of Shellman High? Or is it that we are at a space and time where we have to have another school in which to do that? And so I'd just like to have a deeper conversation.
You're talking about moving some students from Shellman High to another facility? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that I would like a third party to tell me what the best options are for serving all of the kids, and whether it is that we need to have another school or whether it is that we could move students, utilize buildings differently, whatever it is to have the conversation and have some outside recommendations on how to best distribute students. Okay, that's my four. Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 7.1, Superintendent's Notes.
Yeah, I was going to, earlier I said I was going to place on agenda trying to do a little committee of maybe three school board members to meet with the public. I'm going to go ahead and pivot on that. The public's going to be having a meeting at August 28 at the government complex, so that's great. I can go there, and I'm sure there's going to be great participation, so I'll be able to go there and get their input. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Voeche, Superintendent's Notes.
I think we've had a lot of discussion this evening, and we had, really, we had a good opening, absent the issue we had that we spoke about. And I just want to commend all of our teachers, our school administrators, and our staff for the dedication that they have shown each and every day, and the outstanding job that they do each and every day. And especially, the staff at Shellman High School at this point is outstanding, from the top administrator all the way down through the teaching corps, the paraprofessionals, and the staff who service that school as well as all of our schools. I want to thank them and commend them for everything they do.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. And again, thanks to everyone that stayed with us tonight to participate in the meeting, and special thanks to our administrators who helped to take the public comment cards and facilitate the meeting, so thank you for being here.
Move, we adjourn.
I second that motion.
Motion on the floor, second, all in favor, signified by Seann I. The meeting is adjourned. Good night.